Say aye.
All right, Mayor, we'll be good in ten seconds.
Okay, you just give me the thumbs up when it's done. Welcome everyone to our first official virtual regular council meeting since February of this year. Today is Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty, and it's approximately six. I'd like to acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. As everyone knows by now, our meetings due to the COVID-nineteen virus are held virtually and can be seen live on YouTube. Plus, one can go back and watch previous meetings. Please follow our latest news at www.IOP.net or follow us both on Twitter and YouTube. Now my infomercial is completed. Public comments can be submitted by following the agenda instructions on our website. Please feel free to join me or not while I say a short prayer to be followed by my saying the Pledge of Allegiance and then roll call. Heavenly Father, I am tired and I am worn. I feel the pressure from all the challenges surrounding our world, but I thank you that I am not alone. Nor will these challenges crush me or our world. I am unsure of how this can or will work out for our good, but I say no to discouragement and despair in Jesus' name. I feel like everything and everyone is against me, but Father, I thank you that I will never stand alone. Thank you for being with me and everyone through all, both as my friend and as my advocate. Thank you for picking both me and everyone up every time in life and it's hard times that knock us down. Please, Father, look over our city family, our military, especially those who gave the ultimate sacrifice their lives. Father, look after our residents and our guests and those who are sick. Lord, as we enter this upcoming hurricane season, which starts in days, please look over and protect all coastal communities as we recover from our latest challenge. I will rest and in your finished work at the cross, amen. I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nicole, roll call, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Popson?
Here.
Mayor Carroll?
President?
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I'm not quite sure how to do this here, but don't laugh when I say it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here.
Did I forget somebody? Sorry, Councilmember Ward, I apologize. There he is.
Glad to have you, sir. Okay, the reading of the journal of the previous meetings minutes, including February's meeting, that means twelve meetings. February twenty-fifth, March twentieth, March twenty-fifth, twenty-seven, thirteen, anyway, we have twelve. Do I hear a motion to approve all as submitted?
So moved.
And Evan?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion, corrections, hearing none, all in favor?
I have to roll call.
Roll call, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson? I see him say aye. Mayor Carroll?
My?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. All in favor, are you in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Yes, sir, thank you. All in favor.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, citizens' comments, we had quite a few that came out. I would say I counted there were seventeen about face masks in public places such as Harris Teeter. But I appreciate everybody. We got a very engaged community. It feels great to have a community that really stays on top of everything, so thank everyone for your comments. They're all here, everybody has seen every one of them and read every one of them, so thank you for your comments. We are now going to move on to, God, this has been a long time. Reports in standing committees. First up, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a lot of items tonight, and Mayor, if you have a preference, I can either go through the minutes on the items that don't need voting and you can run through all the votes, or I can just take them one at a time as we walk through the minutes. You have preference either way?
You take your pick. Go ahead and go along and we get to the ones that need to be budgeted and we'll get to it.
Okay, sounds good. First, Ron, if you have the statement of financial results through April, you'll post that up, that'd be great. Thank you very much. This was not included in the packet, but we have it available here and can certainly make it available to anybody that wants it. So these results are through April twentieth, and you can see our revenues year-to-date actual about thirteen point three million, just over. Just next to that column, you see our full-year budget is eighteen point eight seven five, however, our forecast budget is fifteen point one, so significant reduction, three and a half-ish million due to COVID-related items. The expenditure side, just to the right, year-to-date actual expenditures are just over twelve million. And you see our annual budget is twenty-two million, our revised forecast is about seventeen million, so again, a lot of cutback on spending, reduced spending, pushed out spending, all kind of, all kind of gyrations that we'll get into in just a minute. Just below that, you can see our general fund revenues and expenditures only, the top two boxes are all of the, all of the funds, total revenue, total expenses for the city for the ten months ending through April, and again, our fiscal year is July first to June, so real quick, Ron, if you'll go ahead to the next page. We discussed most of this in Ways and Means last week, but just for residents and other people watching benefit, April was not too bad of a revenue standpoint, but again, there's a little bit of a lag between when transactions happen within the city and our revenue comes into us, so I'm guessing April wasn't bad, but I'm guessing May will probably be our low point because that will be some March-April activity. Now that, you know, rentals have started back, restaurant, parking, I'm hoping our forecast for fiscal year twenty, which is really conservative, will be in good shape once we get to the end of the year, so we have about three point eight million roughly in revenues that we are forecasting we won't receive based on our original budget. We have about a million and a half that city administration and department heads have gone through and cut out from an expense standpoint for fiscal twenty. So I feel, I feel pretty good about where we sit with regard to our forecast for fiscal year twenty. Again, it's a really, really conservative forecast from a revenue standpoint, and I think a very realistic forecast from an expense standpoint. So our reductions, you know, we have some open positions, we have, again, about a million and a half that administration and department heads have cut out of the budget for fiscal twenty, so thanks to the efforts for those folks. So fiscal twenty-one, which will kick off on July one, similar story, again, a very, very conservative budget, and we've got some more discussion items later on, on our new budget, but again, about a million three on the expense side, we have cut out a fiscal twenty-one budget. We're forecasting, again, a big reduction in revenue for next year, about three and a half million. But again, I feel pretty good, given that activity has kicked back off here on the island from a revenue-producing standpoint. Our current cash deposits is about twenty-one million, rough numbers, and of that, about twelve and a half is unrestricted, just to give you some feel for that. So, real quick, Mayor, I know we've got first reading on the budget later, but just real quick on the approval process for that, we are, we have to pass a balanced budget by the end of June. We were hoping there was going to be an extension from state legislature, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen, so we need to go ahead and do the first reading tonight, which we'll do in a little while. I would love to see where May results come in, and then if we need to tweak our revenue assumptions, we will, based on eleven months of our current fiscal year being in place, and then we can make any adjustments when we get to the second reading, so Mayor, I'll stop right there just to see if there are questions around results or budget twenty-one. Nope. Okay. So Ways and Means meeting last week, we met on Tuesday nineteenth at six o'clock. Debbie reviewed the financial reports that I just hit on. First item that we need is an approval of a proposal in the amount of fifteen thousand from the College of Charleston's, the Riley Center for Livable Communities, to assist in the city developing a strategic plan. So Mayor, we can vote in action on that.
All right, so everybody is aware of that, we had a great presentation, the College of Charleston Strategic Planning Services. Do I hear a motion? Rusty makes a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Um, I'll, I'll say something. I just think it's, it's great that we have this resource available to us and that it's a, a big step in the right direction for us to embrace some strategic planning for the city. And, and that the experts that we have down the street are going to be able to help us.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, just quick comment, I, I had inquired of Desiree because people are asking, why, why is it costing a small amount of money? And it's worth noting that there are interns that'll work, it's a partnership with the college. The talent level is fantastic on this, and it, it really is a community service, it's not just, you know, what is the city spending, have this done? And kudos to Desiree on that, and Desiree, if you want to comment, well done.
I'll make a quick comment, this is a steal for a job to be done, and this would go hand in hand with our comprehensive also, so, thank you. Any other discussion, hearing none? Mayor, we have a roll call, vote in favor of.
Absolutely. Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward? You're on mute. Councilmember Ward, you're on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Mayor, next item is approval of an expenditure in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety dollars and sixty-eight cents. Fire Department mobile radio upgrade, you've got a memo in your packet from Chief Graham, we had a discussion on this last week, so again, we need action on this.
Do I hear a motion to, for this expenditure of twenty-eight thousand, six ninety-six eight, the fire department mobile radio upgrade? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, Chief Graham, would you just briefly kind of give us the, for the public's information, why we're doing this?
Absolutely. Well, the radios we purchased are identical to the ones that are being purchased now, however, we had to purchase ours four years ago. The radios we purchased four years ago did not have the same capabilities and software that the radios that are being sold today do, so in order for us to get on, get in line with the county, the rest of the county, with the rest of the departments who recently bought radios, we've got some upgrades. One of the main things that's going to allow us to do is to keep our radios up to date through a flash-up code over the air programming. So it's kind of like a computer that needs to be updated from time to time. Anytime we currently need a change to our radio, we have to take it to the county, and there's a flash upgrade that happens a couple times a year. That means I have to take every single radio to the shop, it could take several days to get a handful back. So we're talking about a month's worth of work getting radios back and forth to the shop. This would be able to allow us to have our radios programmed over the air. We would still need to go to the shop from time to time for alignments. It's also going to give us the ability for the GPS tracking, which is going to help with accountability of not only the personnel, but the radio. It will tag the last known location, and this really just puts us in line with the rest of the county.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments, hearing none, roll call, vote, vote please?
Sure. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor, there's next, sorry, next item, we don't need a vote on, but just worth reporting, we discussed last week the municipal lease for the purchase of the seventy-five-foot ladder truck for our fire department. We finalized that lease on March twenty-fifth with BB and T at an interest rate of one point eight-three percent. We had budgeted four percent, so that's obviously to the good, and the purchase price came down about a thousand dollars less than original. So Desiree or Chief Graham, anything to add there?
No. No, I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, next item we need is item three, consideration of rent abatement for MJV due to dock damage and UST project delay. We had some discussion around this last week, but hopefully we have some updates this week, so we need action on this one.
Okay, do I hear a motion, and Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong here, estimated rent abatement, there's two of them. One is thirty-three thousand, six thirty-eight, the other one is, um, the total number, sir?
Yeah, I'm trying to get to it on the package, yeah, hang on. Desiree or Debbie, if y'all have it right in front of you.
Mayor, yes, if I, if I may, last week, City Council approved during Ways and Means, City Council approved rent abatement related to the delay regards, related to the underground storage tank replacement project that was delayed for about thirty-four days. That total is forty-seven, forty-nine, plus fifty-one, thirty-two, and we are going, we, we, we need to discuss the other portion, which is related to the two sections of dock that were damaged back in twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen. If it's okay with you, I'll ask Debbie to walk us through the formula that we use to determine what that number is, and then we'll be available to answer any questions that council may have.
Should we have a motion first before doing this, or do this with the information?
We can have, we can go through the formula, have discussion on how we calculated that number, and then certainly, City Council could entertain a motion to approve.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Debbie? Hey Debbie, just real quick on the package, and for everybody, this is on page sixty-three, it's where it's, there's two pages for this, two pieces, Mayor, that you were referencing.
I'm looking at it now.
Yeah, you were faster than I was.
All right, so there are two separate calculations, as was mentioned. The first that we want to talk about is the, the dock losses. So, and back in May of two thousand and eighteen, the face dock was damaged, that's approximately sixty-five linear feet of dock, and it, it is gone. The second loss was about a year later, April first, two thousand and nineteen, another sixty-five feet of dock in the restaurant area, what they call the restaurant dock on Morgan Creek, was damaged and has, has been removed. So what this schedule does is, using the monthly rate from the Marina Joint Ventures rate schedule, calculates the hundred percent revenue and then takes a fifty percent sort of occupancy calculation on that, because we feel pretty confident that the, the docks wouldn't have been fully occupied for this entire period, so fifty percent seemed like a reasonable. It's fifty percent in the winter and fifty percent in the summer. And we use the monthly rate because the daily and the weekly rates produce a much higher number, and the quarterly and the annual rates produce a lower number, so we just went for the middle. Add them all up and you get thirty-three thousand, six thirty-eight. Does anybody have any questions about the, the method of the calculation?
Yes. It's less about the method and more about the definitions. When we say the restaurant dock, we are not referring to the portion of docks that were needed to, I just want to make that clear for everybody, that's not referring to the portion of docks that was in the lease formerly held by Morgan Creek Grill.
Yeah, that is correct. We're referring to the dock that is closer to the restaurant facing Morgan Creek. And I, I do want to add a couple things. One is that the two sections of dock that were damaged and therefore removed amount to approximately eleven percent of the tenants' rentable dock space, and just as a reminder, the reason why the city did not move quickly to fix those docks is we knew that we were at the heels of starting the reconstruction rehabilitation project, and back then, when we received some repair estimates, they were, you know, in the sixty, seventy thousand dollar range, and would, would have required removing the, you know, the entirety of that dock. The pilings are in such a state that it would not, not have supported just repairing that end, end section. It would have to be, it would have to include the, you know, the pilings and, you know, the, the whole section of dock, so the decision was made to spend that money as part of the overall rehabilitation project rather than a repair that we knew was going to have to be removed or changed when the time came that we were ready to start construction on the overall project.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, I talked to Debbie at length on this today. There's two ways to look at this, one is this is forward-looking, knowing that we're not going to have use, or Brian's not going to have use of those docks until we have repaired docks. And if you look at these dates, we're not, we're not going to be complete by the end of August, so you know, the discussion for me is, should we be abating based on a percentage of docks that are unavailable? And Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the numbers are roughly equal, if you look at this amount, or you took eleven percent of the total linear foot, you're not going to get a lot of difference in that number. The question I have going forward, if we do this, once we begin construction of the new docks, are we out of the abatement business, right? Otherwise, we're going to be looking at this again for whatever period of time that those docks are unavailable. I don't have a problem with this, I personally have a problem, you know, borrowing money, working on new docks and saying that we're going to continue this process while we wait on inspections and everything else on the docks. So if, if we can for this discussion, I know we'll have a vote on it, is separate those items to recognize that these dates are fixed and bookended, that, you know, this council's looking at through August twentieth, knowing we're not going to have docks available during that period of time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion for a consideration of rent abatement damage? Morgan Joint Ventures for thirty-three thousand, six thirty-eight?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Desiree?
Um, just as a, a point of clarity, the motion should also include the portion related to the underground storage tank.
USD, yes.
Correct.
Included.
Can we clarify those numbers for the record then, please?
Debbie?
So the total for the, oh. My, my, the calculation related to the underground storage tanks is nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, and then the portion.
Nine, eight, eight, one?
Correct.
Okay, and then plus the thirty-three, six thirty-eight?
Correct, related to the dock losses.
Okay.
All right, so that's total? Deb?
The total is forty-three, five nineteen.
Forty-three, five nineteen, so do I hear that motion, I think Councilmember Ward made the motion?
You include those figures, it's all, all of that.
Forty-three, five nineteen, and who made the second?
Councilmember Buchanan.
Councilmember Buchanan, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify, roll call.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds? Good, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
That was an aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, and Desiree, Debbie, thank you guys, I know this has been a long process on getting to, to those numbers, so thank you for your efforts. Next item from last week, Mayor, we need approval on Police Department's drone policy, Department of Justice grant application for a drone and approval of, of an amount not to exceed four thousand, five hundred dollars for the purchase of a drone. These grant application is not successful, and you've got this package, draft policy in your package that we reviewed last week.
Thanks, sir. I'm going to ask for a, a motion to approve the Police Department's drone policy, and then we're going to have the chief chime in and kind of give us a little background for our public's understanding. Do I hear a motion for a purchase of a drone not to exceed forty-five hundred dollars, and there also may be a grant in there, so do I hear that motion?
So.
Randy Bell made a motion, Councilmember?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Streetman. Discussion. Chief, Cornet, would you give us a lowdown on the drone?
Certainly. So, the specific grant that brought this motion forward is a grant through the Bureau of Justice Department, and it is a grant for COVID-nineteen-related expenditures that include a drone. The drone would be used for COVID-nineteen for us to monitor social distancing on the beach. As you can see in the policy that you have in front of you, the draft policy, we'll be very stringent on the rules that our officers use when they are utilizing the drone in an effort to make sure that we go out of our way to protect the Fourth Amendment rights of all citizens and businesses in the area. So it would be utilized mostly for the COVID-nineteen for social distancing monitoring, but also it is a useful tool to assist with looking at real-time traffic information that we can see all the way through the connector where the traffic is backed up, but also even after COVID-nineteen for missing children on the beach. This specific drone that we were looking at has a camera, a FLIR, and a PEA system on it, so that we could actually make announcements over the, the drone to include announcing the name of a missing child, or if we have a swimmer that goes missing and it gets dark, a FLIR would give us the ability to see them through infrared at night, which would be a great asset to the fire department as well as Police Department, plus it can be utilized, should we have another hurricane or we have another storm and we need to get an assessment done, we could utilize the drone to assist with that, which kind of keeps our people from getting into a dangerous situation if we don't know how stable something is before we go into it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Chief, I think last week you explained some of the protocols you have in place, too, that, you know, the trading protocols, that sort of thing, and what it could be used for, and what it could
what it could be used for. You did a good job of explaining that just now, but just wanted reassurance that, reassurance, I mean, that, you know, that this drone is not sort of a big brother approach.
Absolutely not. So the, the carrying out the Constitution and making sure that we're in line with that is our utmost priority. You know, it, it is not worth losing those constitutional rights to have something out here to look at these COVID-nineteen related issues. So the policy is very specific about making sure that we are, if we're going into private property for any reason, we have to have a search warrant, just like we would if we were going in without a drone with our body. Training is very specific about the laws, the federal laws, the state laws, and the best practices from the International Association of Chiefs of Police. The model policy that you have was actually presented as a model policy by the Municipal Association of South Carolina, which is our insurance company that would cover us if we had any incidents that took place from it. So I'm comfortable with it. We've compared it to some local departments as well, County Sheriff's Department, to make sure that we are within all the guidelines. But training is a must. We have set guidelines for training in the policy as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Anybody else? Councilmember Buchanan?
Alright, thanks. And I just had, I did some research on this. I really had some Fourth Amendment issues with this, Chief. And I think we've talked about this before and just, I don't, as long as it's used for, like you said, you know, trying to help some children, I mean, I can see where that could be helpful, missing swimmers, what have you. But I guess it's really, really wouldn't be much different than wearing like a body cam vest, correct? Or the same, same type of video that's collected and stored?
Correct. The policy dictates that we would have to maintain all video from, from the camera that comes from the drone, just like we would body camera and in-court footage. The difference is that the body camera is not open to FOIA, whereas this would be open to FOIA. And we would have the same retention policy. If it's evidentiary, we keep it for core purposes and things like that. But it, it falls in the same guidelines as what you just mentioned.
Chief, one quick question. If I recall correctly, you have a height limit of four hundred feet and it takes you people to run this drone, one who's actually driving and one who's actually observing. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. And that is a policy that is a must when the drone is deployed. One drives and one is making sure that they're not putting themselves or putting other aerial apparatus at risk by being in the air or in the air or in the flight path. And the four hundred feet is specific for that so that we should be avoiding any flight paths that a helicopter, an airplane has when they're coming through our area. But sometimes they get low, and if they do, they always hit the right away and we move our, our drone out of the way so that we don't cause a wreck from that.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing none. Nicole, roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popsen?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Chief, thank you for tracking that one down. Appreciate you putting all that together. That was a lot of work, I know too. So thank you for doing that. Mayor, next item is consideration of a matching grant program to assist IOP businesses to participate in the MUSC's Back to Business Program. We had a pretty good discussion on this last week. Desiree, if there's an update of any kind, Mayor, if it's okay before we go to a motion, just to get an update on this program and kind of.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So last week, we hosted a webinar with MUSC's Back to Business Program folks and invited all of our retail and restaurants, the short-term rental managed property management folks, the hotel management folks, and invited them to participate to get additional information from MUSC about the benefits of participating in this program and, you know, also to talk about, to get additional information to City Council when it comes to this consideration that's on the agenda today. We, unfortunately, only two folks joined, the manager of the Palm Hotel and the director for the Waldons Resort. We would have, we would have wished to have more people involved. We'll certainly share any additional information based on tonight's actions with everybody on our mailing list. But we only had two folks participate and we talked a lot about the benefits of participating in this program. I just want to remind you all that we just completed the program for the rec center. We received the toolkit and the assessment back today. We are certainly digesting that and making sure that our protocols and our guidelines are consistent to what the CDC and what these public health experts are recommending for the city to do before opening up the gym and opening up the indoor facilities. The cost for this project is based on the, a couple of things. The number of employees, the workflows, and the number of locations. So it could go between three hundred and seven hundred and fifty dollars per organization. Again, it depends on those three, the three pieces of information there. We believe that a grant, a matching ground of five thousand dollars would be a good start for the city to approve. We could use some, a tax funding from this year to make that happen, to assist our restaurant restaurateurs and other businesses on the island to participate, help them cover the costs and and get that sort of seal of approval from MUSC and their team that they are following the proper guidelines, using the proper cleaning products and ensuring the, you know, that they're doing the best to ensure the safety of their visitors. You know, it's up to council in terms of the, the final number and the final grant approval. Also, I think Councilmember Smith had some, had some suggestions about the, the portion that the city would be covering, whether it'll be a fifty-fifty grant or a seventy, twenty-five. That's certainly up for City Council and we would, we would like to get direction from you all on how you all want us to develop that program and market that program to our businesses.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Member Smith?
Yeah. I mean, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we move forward with funding a grant program of five thousand dollars to start with at a seventy-five, twenty-five ratio of the city paying seventy-five percent of the cost to twenty-five percent. Was comfortable with fifty-fifty, but since we haven't had as much interest, or we didn't have much initial interest, I really would like to see us make it attractive. I honestly think this is, it can be a win for public health and a win for our businesses. As we discussed at last week's Ways and Means Committee meeting, there are marketing opportunities as well that could really help us establish Isle of Palms as a leader in best practices when it comes to COVID-nineteen and preventing the spread.
I think I heard a motion for five thousand dollars. Do I hear a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion. Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a, you know, issue for me whether seventy-five, twenty-five, or fifty-fifty. The reality is that seventy-five, twenty-five, we're going to run out of money very quickly. And right now, because we didn't have the interest shown on the front end, we don't really have a clue as to which businesses would be interested. So if I'm looking at this, clearly, in theory, a smaller business would be much more interested in city funding and worrying about it because the cost is fairly nominal. My concern is when you start doing seventy-five, twenty-five on five thousand dollars, that we run out of money too fast without really knowing the reason why we didn't have participation on the front-end meeting.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Pounds?
This is from last week as well. Councilmember Moy, not to put words in your mouth, but I think we were going to, had suggested reaching out to the CVB to see if they would be interested in having a matching program. I don't know if that time given holiday and everything else flying around, if they're interested in helping us or not.
I don't have an answer on that yet, yet, unfortunately.
That's okay. I just want to keep that in front of us just to see. I think it was a good recommendation to see if we can garner some additional monies for help.
Councilmember Ward, I see you raise your hand or not?
He did, thank you. I think from a, first of all, I'm curious from this administrator, I have two questions, if I may, Mayor. The first is for the city administrator, just to ask why, if she got any feedback for businesses that didn't participate, as to why, was there a reason they didn't participate? Is there a lack of interest or was it an availability or just the timing?
We didn't hear, we didn't get any feedback on the reasons why some folks did not participate. I am assuming that, you know, it was right at the heels of the governor allowing indoor and outdoor service. So I'm just assuming that it was an availability issue. So we could certainly, you know, our plan was to reach out, try to coordinate it in another, another webinar. At the heels of any decision that council makes tonight to provide that information and also encourage folks to participate. I don't think it's a lack of interest. I really think it's just an availability issue.
Anyone else?
Can I, I have a comment back here. My comment is, I believe that the city paid three hundred dollars for our assessment. Now, we, we know the assessment is based on the facility and the staff, and our recreation staff size is relatively small compared to some restaurants, but it gives us a benchmark to know how much something might cost. If we take a fifty-fifty approach and we assume our businesses are going to be somewhere between five hundred to a thousand, maximum about ten businesses at the top end, a maximum of about twenty at the bottom. So we're looking probably at, if we just average it, we're looking at about fifteen businesses at five thousand at fifty-fifty. And I could say, we could even cash, cap the offering at five hundred dollars and that way we're limited in case it goes beyond that. That's the approach that I would kind of recommend so that we know at least ten businesses would be able to get in. That seems to cover a good portion of the restaurants that I think are, the restaurants and hospitality, the hotels, I think are the businesses that open to the nose from this. But I might have blind spots here. So maybe I'll make that in the form of a, of an amendment that we move to a fifty-fifty split with a cap of five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, limit five hundred dollars. Any other discussion on the motion to amend?
I, I just have one clarification, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
So the cost for a small organization, and that small is defined as having less than twenty-five employees, only one location and including two general workflows. So one for clients and one for the employees. That's three hundred dollars. And that's the category that applied to the recreation center. The medium category is twenty-five to fifty employees, up to two locations, and also including two general workflows, which is for the clients and the employees. And the cost for that is four hundred and fifty dollars. Large organizations, which is between fifty and a hundred employees and up to three locations, would be seven hundred and fifty dollars. Institutional, the institutional category that would apply to, you know, larger municipalities, resorts, would be on an individual basis. So that would, they would have to do an assessment and then determine the cost based on the number of employees and personnel that they would have to deploy to do the onsite assessment. So we don't have a number for that category, but I think, you know, for the City of Alpines, it would only be a handful, you know, the Waldons Resort and just, you know, less than five organizations that would apply to that. If, if any, if even additional to the resort. So I think that we're comfortable, you know, I think we're, five thousand dollars would be enough if it's a fifty-fifty, fifty-fifty program or seventy-five, twenty-five, I think should be enough to cover the city's businesses.
Okay, I think I saw Susan's hand go up, I wasn't sure.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Moy. I'm fine with going to the fifty-fifty after hearing some of the remarks and that perhaps maybe it was more of an availability issue that was limiting participation. And also with the five hundred dollar limit, maybe relevant in a small number of cases, but worth including. And I would, you know, just with the expectation that if this does start to exceed what we've allotted, that our administrator will come back to us and, you know, indicate to us that maybe more funding is needed.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Buchanan?
Thanks, Mayor. And I just got a couple of questions on this. I'd like to know, because there was only two participants that showed up, you haven't heard anybody else who reached out to you for it. So we're, we're going to go through and try to allow money on something. We're not quite sure how much it's going to cost yet is one thing with that. But also, the, we're, this is going above and beyond what the CDC regulations are. So we're, MUSC is going to come in and kind of stamp establishments as being safe? Or? That's what I'm trying to understand as well.
So what they do is they come in and they do an in-person evaluation of the business and the practices that they were going to implement in order to meet the CDC's recommendations of, for, for retails or restaurants. So what they do is they take the, the general recommendations from the CDC and they make it more specific to that particular organization. They make recommendations on, you know, workflows and, and, you know, make sure that they're using the appropriate cleaning products, make sure that they are interpreting the CDC's guidelines the right way. So it's not, it's not going above and beyond. It's just making sure that they provide guidance on the proper way of implementing those recommendations that are included in the governor's executive order in the CDC.
What's going to be done with that? What's going to be, how's that information going to be used? I mean, does the city can be made aware of those restaurants who that are applying, whether or not, you know, MUSC kind of, I, I'm not sure what's going to be, how the information is going to be utilized as well from a government standpoint.
So that information would not be provided to the city. That would be between MUSC and the individual businesses. But MUSC will provide some signage saying that they've completed the program as a sort of seal of approval and indicating, hey, you know, we, we did have public health experts come through and look at our, our processes and they're, you know, they're stating that they're the right ones and, or, you know, suggesting what to do differently to ensure the public, give the public some confidence that the, the, the management of that, of that business is doing all they can to ensure the safety of the visitors and users. But, yeah, but that information would not come to the city.
Okay, so the MUSC would be able to, they're going to go through, almost kind of like your, your food service or food grade code that you put on their front door. It's a new standard that, you know, these, these businesses are upholding. I mean, that's kind of the only question. The other problem, it can be all good, but the other thing would be is just we're, we're allocating government funds to private businesses as well. So which is kind of outside of our norm as well.
Okay, Councilmember Smith, please.
Yeah, thank you. I, my expectation would be that this program is more advice and not something where they're grading the business, but offering their suggestions and that the business could advertise that they are, you know, have gone through this program and participated in the program. So I don't think it's probably the same thing as a food inspector coming through and giving them an A or a B. And correct me if I'm wrong, Desiree, and then, you know, otherwise, I think that this is a grant program and I think, has the city not done this kind of thing in the past administering grants to encourage positive behavior?
Precedent pandemic.
And maybe, it may help if we have Norma Jean speak to the process that she went through with the MUSC program last week.
Call a question.
Okay, we have a call for a question, and this is for the amendment. So the amendment is up to a share of two, but not to. So the amendment is up to a share of to, but not to exceed $500. We have a roll call for the amendment.
You did the second on that?
We did have a second.
Councilmember Bell is seconding Mr. Councilmember Moy's motion to call the question. All right, councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All right, vote on the amendment as read by the mayor. Councilmember Popson?
And now back to your original.
But we're, now we're going to vote on the amendment of 50/50 from the city at a $500 cap.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
All in favor of the amendment?
What about me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Thank you.
Don't feel left out, Jimmy. Okay, back to the original motion, which was the consideration of matching grant program to assist Alpang's business participate in MUSC's back to business program. The original motion after the amendment passed.
Yeah, as amended, mayor.
Were you going to have, were you going to have Norman Jean talk about this, Desiree, or do you think we're good?
Unless it's, unless it's necessary, I mean, I don't know. I see a lot of heads shaking.
I think we're good.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
The motion passes eight to one.
Thank you very much. Back, Mr. Chairman.
We're making progress, mayor, I swear. So a couple of items that we talked about at Ways and Means last week that are on an expedited separate approval process, are the parking rates and the doubling of the parking fines, and the next, the public hearing is this Friday at 1:00, and the second reading will be at 1:15 on Friday, so that's that. We had a discussion last week on reducing the size of the council from nine to seven, that motion failed. We have two items, mayor, on the agenda that were not touched on at last week's Ways and Means Committee. It's item seven is the first one, reconsideration of the Fourth of July fireworks. And if you're okay, I'll just frame this one up a little bit before we do a motion, if you're all right with that.
That'd be fine, sir, bring one on.
I'd like to follow, follow him up with a motion, please.
So we, when we last left off, mayor, to your earlier comment, our last regular council meeting was February. And at that meeting, we had approved the contract for the fireworks for the July 4th show. During the budget workshop, we canceled really every special event through June 30th, and we also included this July 4th show in that due to two things, budget challenges we were having, and then COVID-19 social distancing requirements for something like this just doesn't seem, didn't seem reasonable at the time, and may not still. So, councilmember Ward, sorry.
Yes, sir. Are you finished? Mr. Pounds? Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to, if we haven't, as of yet, as of tonight, we're going to cancel the, cancel the fireworks this Fourth of July, and also I'd like to redirect those funds that were going to be appropriated approximately $35,000 to be split evenly between all city employees as a one-time bonus in appreciation for all their hard work during COVID-19.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Do I hear, uh, councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I think this makes sense on two counts, well, several counts. One being that we don't want to be encouraging crowds when possible. So while we understand that many people enjoy the Fourth of July show, this isn't the year for a variety of reasons, including the costs. And otherwise, it's, I feel like it's a great message to send city employees, you know, really have been working hard under stressful conditions, and I think this is a fantastic opportunity to show our support for them, and I would imagine that many residents would agree.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment that we separate the two issues and consider the cancellation of July 4th fireworks. I personally don't find it's appropriate to have a discussion that takes the same money and talks about moving it into an employee merit pool. I, it's, it, it, talking about inappropriate, it just seems to me that we're mixing two things, trying to ram through the second. It could be that that second one passes, but it should not be part of a single motion. We should look at the fireworks as a separate issue, and then discuss what we do with that money as a separate issue. So I'll make a motion to separate those and vote strictly on the cancellation of the fireworks.
Do we hear a second for that?
I'll second it, just to get us to discussion.
Okay, discussion on the amendment to separate the two. Yes, sir, councilmember Pounds.
Yeah, I mean, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of some type of bonus, I think it's a great idea, but I would love to leave it to Desiree on how that gets split. I'm going to guess not all 91 employees gave similar effort through these last four months, and I would love to let department heads and Desiree have some discretion over how we allocate that money out.
Any other discussion?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with Councilman Pounds on that as well. I mean, I think if we're going to, if we're going to divert those funds at some point here, and it really should be at the discretion of the department heads with Desiree's oversight as to how that gets distributed.
Any other discussion? If not, oh, councilmember Smith?
Could we hear from our, I'm sorry, I'd like to hear from our city administrator about what she thinks of the approach of, and, or whether she would prefer to do it in a different way.
I serve at the pleasure of council, so I will implement policy as stated by council.
Okay, I would like to add some comments. I look at our, all of our employees, public safety, fire, police, recreation, public works, city hall staff. They have been doing an incredible, over-the-top job since, well, forever, but since this COVID-19 virus came in, you know, $350 or whatever it amounts to is not enough money. I think, I don't care where this money comes from, we need to give them something to say, thank you for a job well done. That's all I'm going to say on that. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got one comment.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I just didn't want, I didn't want it to get complicated and get all convoluted, and let's take it back for study and decide this and that, and that, it's just, it's a simple matter. The employees worked hard and, and gave it their all to protect us, and it's just a simple gesture. And I don't want it to see it get all complicated, I just prefer, we just go ahead and pass it. Send a simple, clean message to employees.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Nicole, would you read the amendment to make sure?
I'll withdraw the motion, doesn't feel like it has support, so there's no point pushing it forward.
Okay, do we have a second? Who wants to withdraw?
That's councilmember Pounds.
You withdrew?
Yep.
Okay, councilmember.
Councilmember Moy? This is not really about the, the approach, but more so around the language. In some of our Personnel Committee meetings, there's been issue with the word bonus for employees. So I'm looking to our, our legal counsel and our city administrator. I don't know if that, if we need to change that for the motion, or if we can correct it later on, but.
I'm certainly flexible on that, John. Whatever you want to call it.
We can, just as a suggestion, we can call it hazard adjustment or hazard pay.
Done. Done.
John, you good at that? Okay, back to the original motion. Roll call, vote, please.
Because the original motion is to take the monies that had been allocated for the Fourth of July 2020, and to be split among the employees as hazard pay or hazard adjustment.
Thank you very much.
All right.
One more question, is that, we mentioned employees, but are we distinguishing full-time employees versus part-time?
I think so.
I have a question.
Discretion of the administrator.
Yes. Okay. So does the amendment then, I mean, does the motion then include the allocation of those funds at the discretion of the administrator?
Correct.
We need an amendment for that.
I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, if I might, and I, and I like what Councilmember Pounds had mentioned earlier, is going through in, having the department heads work with the administrator, determine the allocation of the funds.
Okay, all right, that's where we're at, and that's the motion. Mayor, we get a roll call, but please.
So we're adding the part about the city administrator working with department heads to determine a proper allocation as a friendly amendment, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so councilmember.
That's fine. That's fine, I'm fine, second, whatever.
Councilmember Popson, you're the second, you're good with that?
I'm good with that.
All right, so to make sure we're good, we're on the same page, councilmember Smith? Voting?
Oh, this is a vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Major, aye.
All in favor, plus major.
Mr. Chairman?
Two more, mayor, I promise. Now skip to one, we'll go back to six. Approval to join litigation involving short-term rental online businesses. Desiree, do you want to frame this one a bit before we go to a motion?
Sure, I, well, the city would be approving, if approved by city council tonight, the city would join legal action with other local municipalities seeking to recover accommodations tax funds that some online short-term rental companies should be paying, but have not been doing so historically. So this would only focus on litigation on the online platforms such as Airbnb, HomeAway, VRBO, et cetera, not local hosts.
Thank you, Desiree.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
So mayor, I'll make that motion that we approve to join the litigation involving short-term rental online businesses.
Second. And Mr. Moy seconded it. Any other discussions?
Jimmy, quick comment?
Yes, sir, please.
It's worth noting for the public that this is on a contingency basis, so we're not spending legal dollars on this, correct?
Correct, yes, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, any other discussions? We're done. May we have a roll call, but please?
Yes, sir, councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, last item, mayor. I'm going as fast as I can, man. In your packet, on, I think it's page 76, we've got consideration of portico design for the Public Safety Building Rehabilitation Project. I think we first talked about this in February at our last meeting also, Desiree. You want to update and walk through the couple of options, please?
Absolutely, and I think Ron will also put up the drawings of the two designs that are up for consideration. So just as a reminder, back in February, when city council approved the construction budget for the, discussed two alternate designs for the entrance of the building. Both of them are included in your packets, and they're included in the screen currently. The cost for the first option, which is the two-story entrance portico, would require a scope and cost adjustment of approximately $161,000. The second option involves a simpler one-story canopy designed for the front entrance, and that one would be covered with an existing allocation of roughly $47,000 that are included in the budget. So back in February, the simpler option, which was also included in the cost of the budget, the cost of the project was approved, with the understanding that the city council would revisit this issue before the deadline came, which was provided by the design bill team. So we have weekly meetings with the design bill team, and then a couple of weeks ago, they indicated that they would need to have a final decision on the entrance design by city council by the First of June. So we've included this here in the event that, you know, you know, like we promised back in February, for council to decide which, which way we're moving forward. The idea back then was to look at our contingency budget, which is $788,517, and then make a decision on whether the city wanted to expand an additional 161 to go with the two-story design.
Desiree?
Yes, sir.
How are they looking within their budget to date?
They have, they have used some of their own contingency budget. So you may recall that the $5,256,000 project included a 10% contractor's contingency. We have not used, I don't know if Debbie has that readily available. But our contingency is looking, it's looking healthy still, but that may change certainly as we move farther along with the project.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, as everybody has seen this, and our public is seeing this, and so this is a consideration of the portico design for the Public Safety Building Rehabilitation Project. Do I hear a motion to go one way or the other for discussion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and utilize the, the first, the way it's budgeted right now, and the way you approved it previously in our city council meetings.
I'll second.
This discussion, can we go back to every, we can see everybody so I can see who's saying goes up? Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I have an answer to your question, we have not yet used any of the $788,000 that we have in our budget.
Thank you. All right, discussion. Councilmember Bell?
Yeah, I just, you know, there's, there are two contingency pieces to this. One is the contractors, which we have no control over, one is our contingency that hopefully we don't need to spend. But I just think at this time, the prudent thing for the community is to save every dollar that we can, given the revenue shortfalls, I like the more expensive option better. But I think it's incumbent on us to try to save the dollars where we have an opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Moy, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think, I just had a quick point of clarification, and I think Desiree might have said this, so I'm sorry if I didn't hear it. What's the total contingency that we have?
$788,000.
Okay, Councilmember Popsen.
So it's more of a question, could there be an option three? And can we doll up, what we agreed to with the, the smaller portico, can we doll that up a little bit to make it look a little nicer where we don't have to go two-story? Just make this one a little bit nicer for a little bit more money, um, would just be a suggestion. And I know they've got to have an answer by June first, we have a meeting scheduled for Friday, so, you know, maybe they can look at that, give us a number, um, and then we can go from there, but just an idea.
So the design bill team is working on the, on a couple of designs within that forty-seven thousand dollar figure that's included in the budget, and they should be presenting that to us hopefully this week. Um, so it won't look, it may not look as simple or as basic as the drawing that you all have in front of you. They are working on some additional designs. I, you know, I can, I can let them know that there may be an appetite from council to spend a little bit more than the forty-seven thousand. Um, and if so, if that is the case, if that is approved by council, then, um, you know, give them, give them a little bit more legway, um, to, to, you know, provide a different design, but, um, we haven't seen what the forty-seven thousand really could give us, um, just yet.
Councilmember Streetman.
I, I, I don't know that I'd be in favor of letting them know that we may have an appetite to spend a little more money. I'd see what the best they could do, given the, uh, the amount that's, uh, there now, you know, rather than letting them think that, well, they may come off some more dollars for this.
That would be my recommendation, I think we can see, we can look at what the forty-seven could, could give us and, and make a decision then.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, and I would just say first, I want to thank the design bill team for bringing this to our attention and giving us an option and realizing that that extra expense was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or more for a, to make a portico pretty, might not be our, um, top choice. So for that reason, I, I am supportive of maybe doing a little bit more than what we have been presented, uh, to make it more attractive, but otherwise that felt like it was just too much money.
Councilmember, who else had a hand up? Uh, Popsen, thank you.
Yeah, I, just to be clear, I'm, I'm not anxious to go ahead and spend more money. I just thought that we could come up with a little bit better design than what we're showing here. So if that's in the works and they're going to doll this up a little bit, that was all, only my point.
If it's all right, I'm gonna like give you my comments, um, number one, we inherited this twelve-year-old boondoggle of a building. Normally, being has set the bar high when it comes to having a rec center, that is the crown jewel of Alpans, and it looks great. Our city hall building is so-so. But this building here is the third building that was built down there, and they built it in two thousand eight at the peak of the two thousand eight recession. To me, this short entry just does not do the building justice. I think we need a, a more worthy entrance there, and, and I really feel that we need to find a way to dress it up. That short one just doesn't do it justice, this is our main building that most people see. And again, this is not our fault, it's, 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 we, we messed up in two thousand eight, and now we need to fix it. And I think we need to do it right and be proud of whatever we do, because this is going to be for future generations to look at. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the table to go with what we have designed as for the short portico, hearing no other discussions. We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith.
Hi.
Councilmember Pounds.
Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember Streetman.
Hi.
Councilmember Moy.
Hi.
Councilmember Popsen.
Hi.
Mayor Carroll.
Nay.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you very much. Moving on, uh, I mean, sorry, just make sure that we have no other business under, um, ways of meaning.
You're, you're kind, Mayor, I'm out, I'm done, thank you.
All right, moving on, public safety.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm gonna try and do better than an hour and thirteen minutes, Philip.
Hey, hey.
You know, thank you.
And Ryan, that's after three hours last week, man.
Absolutely, I'm telling you. The, uh, public safety committee met, um, Wednesday, May thirteenth, at ten o'clock via Zoom as well. And, um, all committee members were present as well as the administration. Under old business, we, he had discussion on the refurbishment of the ninety-five-foot ladder truck. And Chief Graham reported that the work on the truck is still on schedule and should be returned, um, by the end of June. We had some discussion of implementing the paid parking and designated public beach parking zones. Administrator had reached out to DOT to see, um, if the city would need to apply for modified encroachment permits for additional signage. And, and upon implementation, the parking spaces will be available to those paying via phone app, so no kiosks or meters will be loaded throughout, will be located throughout the island. And we have budgeted in this next fiscal year for the equipment and infrastructure to put that in, in, in that plan into place. We also had an update on the public safety building rehabilitation project that we talked about as well. Um, so from the interior, and Desiree, you can update this if there's anything additional to it as well. But from the interior, the drywall is pretty much complete on the second floor from, at the, at the time of the meeting of the fire department, and the HVAC systems for the second floor for the police department is being installed. They have coordinated with, coordinating the move of the fire department from the third floor. And, uh, the work was slated to start on the third floor a while ago, but due to the pandemic situation, they had to delay the, the movement of the fire department so they could stay in the third floor instead of using a lot, utilizing the trailers and basically putting people in confined space. Project is still on schedule and on budget, and there really, there hasn't been any new deficiencies, um, that have been discovered to date. Uh, we went on and had discussion of recommendation from the planning commission related to the short-term rentals, um, that will be continuous. Um, the director cur reminded the committee members that the recommendations regarding short-term rentals, uh, were being offered up by the planning commission. There's, there's a number of steps through there that we're gonna have to go through and take action on. The chief is still working on the pedestrian crossing, um, light at Palm Boulevard in Alpam's connector. He stated that S, SEDOT is still telling him that the delay, basically what they want to do is have a delay button. And so it stops traffic in all directions, but it stops traffic for forty-one seconds in all directions. And he's trying to find ways that, you know, we can solve the problem without, um, mitigating other problems. So he's gonna continue to work and try to, um, problem solve that situation. Under new business, we had discussion of parking and traffic complaints on Seventh Avenue, um, from residents in that area. And the chief indicated that he was gonna increase patrols and had increased patrols. And from what I understood in the last, you know, couple of weekends, is that a number of parking tickets have been written in those, not only just that area, but throughout the island. Um, we have discussion of regulations for dogs on the beach, and an update on the number of violations from his concerns. Following a report from a citizen who was, uh, bitten recently by a dog off-leash. The chief, Chief Cornet reported that nine dog off-leash tickets were written last year, and only two have been written so far this year. I'm sure that number has jumped up because this meeting, I mean, it was five thirteen. But he's also instructed the officers to be more aggressive in enforcement of the law. And, uh, the administrator stated that she's gonna work with the public safety department to use social media to create videos in an education program to, to talk about dogs on leash and hours that are available to them. We had discussion of the governor's social distancing guidelines for restaurants and, restaurants and the enforcement thereof. Chief, uh, Cornet and Chief Graham and their staffs went around the local businesses to discuss the rules of the exec, the governor's executive order regarding the indoor and outdoor dining, and basically gave them, um, the information and literature on how to, that, that was out there from the CDC in the state. Under department reports, Chief Graham, um, shared that the new truck has arrived, but we cannot use it yet because we have, we can't put it in a service because of COVID, they haven't been able to send somebody up to train, um, the department on how, how to properly utilize the truck. Um, and I'm not sure if we have any, Chief, do you have any update on that, when we know that may be possible?
No.
That was no, okay. Oh, next week, okay.
Yes, we have a day.
Thank you. Under Chief Cornet's report, um, he gave statistics regarding citations at the checkpoint and during the reopening to, um, to date. That was up to five thirteen, I can only imagine what they are now. Sixty-four warnings were given during the beach when the beach access pass were closed, seventy-six, twenty-seven social distancing warnings, thirty-seven warnings for stay-at-home violations, then there were three site state, three citations for social distancing, four citations for stay-at-home, five hundred and ninety-eight warnings to keep moving when we had to keep warn, keep moving, um, policy on the beach, and one citation for short-term rental violation. After the checkpoint was lifted, the public safety issued four hundred and seventy-eight parking tickets. And I'm just curious to see what those, what those numbers are now. Um, Chief Cornet, uh, also talked, we talked about the use of the drone, and we had that discussion earlier and passed. So our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June first at nine AM.
Great, committee report, any questions for public safety? Councilmember Smith.
Could we get an update on how things went this past weekend? From the chief?
Yes, you can. Um, let me see, I've got all of them, but let me see if I've got just this weekend for you. I wasn't prepared just to give this weekend, I can tell you, we wrote about, on average, it was a hundred and fifty parking tickets uh, that we each day, a hundred and fifty each day, give me one second, I've got it here, just gotta find where I put it. Uh, we did make several uh, charges for alcohol on the beach, I would say that was our second highest. Here it is, right here, so eleven charges for alcohol on the beach and one violation or ticket issued for smoking on the beach. And we've got more, just not seeing it on here right now. I can tell you, since we took the checkpoint down, we've written eighteen hundred and eighty-eight parking tickets. Uh, that's from May fifth through, uh, the twenty-fifth. We've issued or had four weapon violation charges, those are all gonna be gun charges. Um, one violation of protection order, one petty larceny, one distribution of marijuana charge. Twelve charges for possession of marijuana, one for possession of drug paraphernalia, two DUIs, two disorderly conducts, two open container-removing vehicle, five minor possession of alcohol or beer, one minor possession of liquor, one contributing to the delinquency of a minor, thirty-five alcohol charges for on the beach or on streets, sixty traffic-related violations, one sleeping vehicle, one dog at large, two noise ordinance violation, one smoking ordinance, and one alarm ordinance, all within the, uh, the targeting of the beach reopening.
Thank you, and could I just follow with your assessment of how social distancing was going on the beach this past weekend?
Social distancing went pretty well, we did, obviously, in the front beach area, that was the area where we have the biggest congregation of people. We did have to go through a couple of times and warn them. Uh, Saturday, when I was out here, we had a congregation there, and then a congregation breach in light, uh, with people in the water. So we did go down and address both issues and clear them out. I will say one thing that we were getting, we would get reports of social distancing violations, and if you look at a certain area from one angle, then it looks like everybody is very close. But if you step to the side a few feet, then you see that they're actually distanced out like they're supposed to be. But because it's a, a tighter area, when you have something in the backdrop like a pier, then it's easy to look like there's a larger group that's not congregating or that's not following the social distancing. I, I would say for, it was much better than I expected it to be this weekend for social distancing.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, anyone else?
Uh, Mayor, just a quick question for the chief.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, chief, uh, how we doing with the BSO staff up, you know, getting, getting enough staff in place? I mean, I recognize, I think all of us did probably, we were out on Palm Boulevard some over the weekend, that we had a little bit of the double parking thing creep back in there and, uh, it, and I saw the BSOs out there writing tickets, particularly on the avenues, just wondering where we were getting fully staffed so we could handle that a little more effectively.
So for BSOs, we have five current BSOs, and we did three interviews last week and one this morning to fill additional spots. I will tell you, with the double parking, the difficulty there is knowing who's double parking. If we just merely see two cars parked there, we don't know who wrote, who broke the law. You know, if one person comes in and parks far right when they get there first and unload and they go to the beach, and then somebody parks to the left of them, the person that parked to the left is technically the violator. But if I don't see who was there first, I can't write that ticket and stand in front of a judge and say without a doubt that that person broke the law. Uh, and so those, the triple parking, the double parking are very difficult for us to enforce.
Right, well, I thought that second line, the second chalk line was to delineate where that, uh, proper parking was, is that a problem?
It, well, it, it is, but some people still park far left. For example, when my wife comes, she's getting four kids out, she wants to get as far away from the road as possible because my kids are, well, they're my kids, so there's no telling what they're gonna do. So she parks as far right as she can, and the concern would be if she parked far right and somebody pulled up next, technically she, she didn't park, double parked, but if I wrote her the ticket because she was on the white line, you know, she didn't break the law, the person that parked beside her on the left did.
Well, maybe we should save the labor on putting that second line down.
It did, I will say, the second line did help to alleviate some of that double parking. It was not nearly as bad this weekend, I think you would all agree, not nearly as bad this weekend
Agreed.
as was the weekend prior, I think it does help.
Right. Okay, thank you, chief.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm just chiming in on that, I think, once we have more manpower, if it can be directed on the front end at the beginning of the day, because once the double parking starts, other people assume that it's okay, and it just spreads like a virus. So, um, yeah, recognizing that you do have a manpower issue, once that gets resolved, hopefully, we could have people on hand to stop, you're not gonna stop everybody, but at least stop the initiators of the bad conduct.
That would, and it is hard to enforce, I did, I was driving down, I probably could have done this all day, drive down Palm Boulevard and see somebody parking wrong, and yell at them out the window, go, hey, don't do that, I'm gonna come back and write you a ticket. You'd be surprised how many people I went back and wrote a ticket to because they just didn't listen. But there were several that, when I do see them do that, obviously, we go back and write them tickets, but I would agree, we could get it, or get out there early and maybe try to alleviate some of those issues, and you could spend all day just driving down Palm Boulevard, trying to stop people from making a stupid mistake.
Thank you.
Uh, chief, real quick, my closing remark is, hearing that we had four gun violations, my house off to each and every one of the public safety personnel, because you don't know what you're gonna walk into when you leave your house every day. So thank y'all for what you're doing, because you just don't.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm very proud of our team, they did a phenomenal job this weekend, I couldn't ask for a better group to work with.
Okay, um, next meeting date is? Did y'all say?
Yes, June first, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, moving on, Public Works.
Public Works, Ryan, that was good, but I'm getting ready to king you, man. Uh, Public Works, one o'clock on Wednesday, May thirteenth, Donnie and Robert are doing a fantastic job, and that's all I have to say about Public Works Committee.
Whoa. We have a winner.
Couple, couple of items, real quick. Drainage phase three and internal, small internal projects, um, these small projects have been fully permitted, hopefully ready to go out to bid in a month. Hopefully start, Desiree, if you have any updates, feel free to chime in, hopefully start construction early August. We do not expect any of these projects to impact beach parking or work on weekends, should take about sixty to ninety days to complete phase three drainage. Says, uh, Desiree, when we last met, we were waiting on the Army Corps of Engineer, but I believe we have all permits in hand now, is that right, for phase three drainage?
No, not for phase three drainage, you may be confusing that with the Marina project, which we do now have, um, all permits in hand. Um, but we are still waiting for the Army Corps permit for the phase three drainage.
Okay, thank you, and that one, hopefully will be ready for bid in November with construction beginning early next year and a six-to-nine month completion.
Correct.
Uh, the inclusion of the multi-use path on Waterway, we're still, need some work done by Thomas and Hutton before final price can be determined on. before final price can be determined on that to include that with Phase Three drainage. We had an update from Donnie and Robert on IOP Connector and the sidewalk extension, obviously, has been diverted with COVID- nineteen and other work there that will pick back up. Hopefully, soon, we can finish that up. We have a RFP out for Citywide Landscaping Services, our current provider, has indicated they're not interested in renewing their contract with us at the current rate. Councilmember Smith asked if this RFP be shared on the city's social media, and Desiree, I believe that's already happened. I think I saw that.
Yes, that is correct. I hope we're expecting proposals next week.
Great, thank you. Last two items we had from our workshop, Budget Workshop Three, we put a lot of ideas on the table. We had initial conversations, very early conversations, us outsourcing household garbage collection. Donnie, Robert, and crew, we've got a lot of data to look at, a lot of information to look at, just early, early stages of having this conversation. And our next committee meeting, Mayor, is June fourth at eight AM.
Thank you very much. That was a very nice sleight of hand in the beginning there. Any questions for Public Works? Hearing none. Moving on. Recreation. Recreation, one once. Hello?
Sorry. Sorry about that. I got multiple screens working. And so Recreation Committee met, it was just councilmember Moy and myself, as far as members of council. And we met with our Recreation Director and City Administrator. I'm going to let Norma Jean chime in in a moment and get us up to speed on where things are. But in general, things shut down on March fifteenth for recreation activities. And just, we're coming out of that in terms of the indoor facility. The outdoor has been a fluid situation, as we've discussed in some of our meetings along the way, some of our emergency meetings. So I'll let Norma Jean kind of get us up to speed as to where we are with use of facilities at this point.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith. Well, our inside facilities have not been opened yet. We hope to do that, actually, maybe tomorrow. The governor did lift some restrictions. We've had the tennis courts open for single-play only. Our fields have been divided off, and they've been used for three people on either side. Social distancing, and of course, we put two basketball goals up for individual play, three people on a court with no games. That's been a little challenging. But what we'd like to do, the governor continues to lift some guidelines. And this past Friday, I received an update Friday afternoon. So he's going to allow us to open the playgrounds beginning May the thirty-first, which is this coming Sunday. We would like to put signage around that people are playing at their own risk. The manufacturers of the playground equipment do not advise disinfecting. You would have to do it after every child goes down the slide, and that's just not feasible. We can open our building. We have specific guidelines that we have to go by. So the only thing we would do would be small classes. Every person in a class has to have a ten by that does limit the space that you can use. We will be ready for summer camp. Whatever rooms we use for summer camp will be dedicated to summer camp only, as per CDC guidelines. We can have volleyball, as long as we can abide by the five per every thousand square feet. We probably will not do that yet. The governor, as of Friday, said no basketball yet, inside or outside. Fall sports a little bit later. And they have said our summer camps are okay to go. They recommend a ratio of one per ten, one counselor per ten campers, but we've always maintained an eight to one. We've always been a little bit, had a better ratio on that. So we did do the MUSC evaluation. I think we did very well. It was a hundred and fifteen pages, and I haven't read them all. I just got it today. But we had to submit our policies and procedures. They reviewed those, as well as our cleaning products, our disinfectants. We had to give them a blueprint of the facilities. But we had it lined out. We gave them a lot of information, and they used that in the evaluation. So things have been going pretty well. Scheduling and working out programs for summer camp particularly have been challenging because it's going to be a whole new way of dealing with summer camp. But I think we can do it, and we've got some good plans in place to make that happen. Camp will start on June fifteenth. And so we're excited to bring some folks into the Rec Center, but we're going to do so cautiously. You have any questions? I'll try to answer them.
Thank you. Appreciate you chiming in. And we did hear from Norma Jean as well about some of the things that the staff had been doing in the interim when facilities were closed, but they were actually, you know, doing things behind the scene. That includes, you know, keeping in touch with senior citizens, you know, offering some virtual opportunities, and just doing some overdue projects for maintenance and facilities and that kind of thing, and cleaning. So they did their best to use their time well. Otherwise, we discussed an old business. We discussed the swimming pool Citizens Advisory Board, and there was agreement that in light of COVID- nineteen, it would be best to table the issue of, we had, as you all know, previously looked at, you know, having a committee that would gauge public interest in a swimming pool with the possibility that we could work towards having a referendum on that. But for right now, because of a variety of issues related to COVID- nineteen, this doesn't seem to be the right time for that. So we've, staff was going to reach out to people who were selected for the advisory board and convey that we appreciated their enthusiasm, but that we will be tabling that for now. And otherwise, our next meeting date will be at five PM on Monday, June first.
Great report. Any questions for Recreation? Hearing none. Moving on. Personnel.
It's me. The Personnel Committee met several times over the course of the last month, primarily with regards to one particular topic, and I shouldn't say primarily, exclusively for one topic, which was the discussion of our vacancies on the Planning Commission. Since this body last met in a regular council meeting, we actually incurred an additional vacancy on the Planning Commission. When Councilmember Pounds was elected, he left us with a huge gaping hole to fill on that commission with his expertise. And so we began the search for his replacement. And fortunately, we're able to piggyback on that search process to make recommendations for two new members of the Planning Commission. Real briefly, the process that we kind of undertook was to work with staff, as well as the Planning Commission and the Chair of the Planning Commission to identify, essentially, what qualifications and what individuals would be the best fit for the current makeup of the Planning Commission. And with that information in hand, we looked at all of the applications from folks who applied this year and previous years. And we also opened up interest, as we opened up the online portal again for any new interest in December. And so as always, whenever we, you know, throw out the call for expertise, we were inundated with really amazing, talented individuals. And so always like to take this opportunity to say thank you to our community. We know that it's a huge blessing that we have such an engaged and such a talented, wise group of folks that live here that want the best for our city. With that, we evaluated the resumes and the applications of, I think it was ultimately thirteen, give or take. And we chose the three finalists based on the criteria that we had from the Planning Commission and staff, and invited them to interviews. We conducted structured interviews. And with the outcomes of that, we have recommendations to counsel that I'd like to make in the form of a motion now that we recommend Scott Pierce and Marty Brown to the two vacancies left by Philip Pounds and Louis Gregory, respectively.
I'll check at that.
Okay, do we have questions? Yes, Desiree.
Just a clarification. So these two appointments are going to fill the two unexpired terms for the Planning Commission. Both terms expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Chairman Moy, we've got a lot of great people on there, but at the same time, I would like to see, you know, kind of like we're talking about council. It's nice to have diversity. It's nice to have history. At the same time, it's also nice to have some turnover. So people who've been on there for ten years or so, maybe somebody else could come along. So again, just a little evolving as we go along. But thank goodness, we've got the talent that we have on there who have led us well with parking, with drainage, with sewer, and our future is loaded up with other challenges. But that's all I have to say. Anybody else?
I neglected to point out what's in your packet, but for the sake of the public. Marty Brown's background is in civil engineering, and one of the areas where he expressed some interest and some ability and expertise and background in helping is with parking and every, all of the challenges that we're going to face with that. So really excited for that. And speaking to diversity, from an age perspective, he's a young, he's got a newborn baby, two weeks younger than, older, excuse me, than my girl. So, you know, there's a diversity of perspective with being a new dad. And then Scott Pierce has an incredibly strong financial background, being Chief Financial Officer. He's done a lot of long-term planning for Verizon and other large corporations. And so we've got, in the midst of things that we're facing with our finances of the city, with obviously parking being a constant concern, we've got some great expertise coming in.
Thank you. Hearing no other questions. Nicole?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ward? Read.
Jimmy?
I'm unmuted. I'm sorry. Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Your name is. Thank you very much. Chairman, anything else?
That's it. Our meeting again next month.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Real Property.
Thank you, Mayor. The Real Property Committee met Wednesday, May fourteenth at five o'clock. All committee members are present. We met via Zoom again. Under Old Business, we had update on Marina dot permitting and rehabilitation project. And Desiree, as usual, go ahead and add to this anytime you feel necessary. The permits from OCRM and Army Corps of Engineers are in hand, designed for the Marina Rehabilitation Project. Kirby Marshall gave an update, a very in-depth update of the Marina project from the very beginning to where we are now. And basically, we're at a point now where the design process should only last a few more weeks. We had an update on the Marina Restaurant Proposal, and that is still moving forward. We're working with parking issues, and they're still going through their due diligences. We had update on public safety building rehabilitation. I mentioned that previously in public safety, so I'm going to bypass that. We had discussion of the consideration of the rent abatement for Marina Joint Ventures, the dock damage and the underground storage change delay, but we've already moved on that and discussed it as well. Under New Business, we had consideration of a change order to ATM Applied Technology Management Contract for additional services related to the Marina Dock Rehabilitation Project with wastewater, with water and wastewater permitting, pump-out grant application, and construction administration services. And Mr. Marshall had explained the request for the changes and has brought up that the consideration should be made part of the budget process as we're going through it. And Mr. Marshall indicated that the services required for wastewater permitting is the most time-sensitive to the changes, but it's something we can work with. And the request for additional construction administration service went up, and it paralleled the scope of the project, so that went up as well. We had discussion of front beach public restrooms, the maintenance contract. As y'all know, the contractor who is in charge of that ended their contract and decided not to do it anymore. So Public Works stepped up. They've been helping out, been restocking, opening and closing the restrooms. And so the city has entered into an emergency contract with quality touch janitorial services for twenty-eight hundred dollars a month during the summer months and for daily restroom cleanings. But it's something we're going to have to put out for bid here as well for our next seasons. We did go into executive session in accordance with thirty-four, thirty-four, seven, eight, two to discuss negotiations with proposed contractual arrangements related to Marina Restaurant Lease. When we came out of the session, no decisions were made at that time. And we adjourned at five twenty-six, and our next meeting date is scheduled for next month. I don't see it in front of me.
Very important. Questions for Real Property?
Hearing? Any action from us? I mean, any of those other things, or we're good?
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none. Moving on. Reports from city officers, boards, commissions, accommodations, tax advisory committee, no meeting. Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting. Planning Commission minutes are attached. Reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions received, referred, or disposed of, none. Bills already in possession of council, none. Now we're up to second reading of Ordinance twenty twenty dash oh one, an ordinance that makes it unlawful to flee from a public safety officer under certain conditions. I can't believe that's not already in there. We learned. So do I hear a motion?
Done.
Chief, would you like to give us an update real briefly for the public?
So it's pretty specific. As long as an officer is carrying out the functions of their job and have a reason under the code of law to stop an individual for an infraction or suspicion of a crime, then if the individual fails to stop, then the officer could then make an arrest. It came from an incident where a subject fled from the gas station and, am I still here? Subject from the gas station, and officers pursued him. Agencies came to help, and turned out he had a warrant from another state that didn't want him. And we put all that effort into something and had nothing to charge him with. So that's part of the reason. He ran and took a lot of resources, put a lot of people in danger because of everybody coming to help that officer.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan? Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Your name is. Introduction of new bills, resolutions, and proclamations, Ordinance twenty twenty oh three, an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for the City of Alpalm, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty, and ending on June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. This is for first reading only, by title only. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that, Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
No discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman? Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan? Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you, unanimous. Miscellaneous business, next meeting date, six PM, Tuesday, July twenty eighth.
Um Mayor, I just wanna cor- correct that for the record, that is, that is an error. The next meeting will be June twenty third. Oh, I got ahead of myself.
It's okay, I'm, you know, you gotta keep me correct. Thank you. June twenty third, everybody. Okay, um discussion and consideration of requiring the public to wear face masks. Um going to essential businesses. Um Desiree, would you give us a little background on this, please? A little background?
Sure. Um this was included on the agenda as a request of um Councilmember Moy and the mayor. Um I believe that city council throughout this weekend received a number of um requests from the public. Um and emails and communications requiring the city to. Pass some sort of a an ordinance or a resolution or some sort of requirement for um. The public to wear face masks when going to grocery stores. Um so we have included it for discussion. Uh there was a resolution that was drafted and distributed to council earlier today. As a result of adding this item on the agenda. Um so, you know, it's it's up for a discussion for council about whether or not the the group, the policy setting group would like to. Make some sort of um resolution or recommendation or requirement on the public wearing face masks. In um different retail establishments.
Thank you very much. Julia, I'm not gonna let you off the hook tonight. Um private property, private businesses, um that was one of the questions that Desiree asked you. And you know, we do have limitations of what we can and cannot do. Um would you just kind of give us a brief clarification?
The governor's latest executive order number thirty seven, he's made it very clear that the use of masks is a voluntary. Um recommendation. Um also, he's authorizing D HAC to issue any new changes to that, but right now it's not mandatory anymore. It's it's. It's a suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um.
I just wanted to add, Mayor, that certainly some businesses have implemented policies. Um within their establishments that do require the use of face masks, but that has not yet been um ordered or mandated by by the governor. Or by D HAC at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell, did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna comment. I I don't know if everyone saw it, but um. Forty-two percent increase in South Carolina, right? So I think what the residents are asking. Is not for us to enact something that carries the force of law. But some degree of unanimity from council that says we recognize that we're not out of the woods on this. And would respectfully request that businesses where it is applicable. On a personal level, I had a conversation with one of the email writers and when you look at essential businesses, my question was. You can't tell a dentist that everybody in the office has to wear a mask, right? There there's a common sense element of this. I think it was aimed predominantly at large gathering places like Harris Teeter. And I I shuffled when I read the statistics today. It said South Carolina forty-two, Alabama twenty-eight. That's not a good thing in this case. Uh we are way ahead of other states in in the rise and the increase, and frankly, it's due to the fact that we're a tourist test. South Carolina is getting inundated from other states that still have a problem, so. Uh hopefully, um you know, we'll look at it and recognize that it doesn't carry the force of law, but it's something that makes sense uh to respectfully. Abide by. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Anyone? Councilmember Streetman?
Uh yes, uh just a few comments here. I mean, I too got the the emails and all of council guy and uh. And I had a conversation with uh one of the email writers uh myself earlier this morning. And this truly was a a grassroots concern by a lot of our residents, a lot of our citizens. And I'm glad that they got in touch with us in regards to this. Uh I see it as we need to look at it as an effort to do all we can do to. Protect and ensure the safety of our residents and of course our visitors as well, as much as we can. And I know that the main business that was referenced is truly one of the busiest spots that we have on the island, particularly on Saturdays and Sundays. When we have short-term rental exchanges and that sort of thing, too. And I was in that business at one time for many, many years. And uh I gotta tell you, it's a difficult situation because you have a very small facility there. With a lot of people that all come in at once, and this is difficult to manage. And I'm sure that I'm sure that the employees of that store would like to have, they would like to have. Something in place that would help ensure their safety as much as anything. And our regular cit- our cit- regular citizens who shop in in the location, uh they wanna have some measure of security themselves. And uh I I I read the emails and quite honestly. This is a situation that could be dealt with by this private company on their own. They could have a one-off situation where they single out that particular store and put a policy in place. That says, if you're gonna shop in our store, you must wear a face mask or a face covering. Uh with some exceptions. I mean Costco does it. Uh they, you know, what, they exclude ch- small children. And they exclude anybody who may have a condition where they can't wear a face covering. But that's a, that really is a matter that could be addressed by that particular company. Have a mandate or ordinance from a government entity to do that. I had a store at one time on one of the barrier islands and and it and in that day and still now, we had to. Monitor the amount of people that could go in and out of that store at any given time because the store was so small. Two or three people in and have, you know, after two or three came out, so you had to have that measured approach. And that was without a pandemic, so. Uh I wanna do all we can to protect our citizens and I'm I'm totally in agreement with the res- resolution here. But I also think that there's other things that, you know, if these concerned citizens would put the push on corporate headquarters or a particular company. They could make, they could make some changes. They could go above the Director of Communication for that company. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh Councilmember Smith and then Moy.
Thanks. Um I have a question in regard to the actual wording of the motion. Makes it sound like whenever you go outside of your home, including outdoors. That you should be wearing a mask, especially in the title of it. I would be much more comfortable, even though I recognize that it's a recommendation, if it was targeted towards indoor. Wearing masks indoor. And so uh if maybe Julia could speak to the language that was used and whether we could. Whether there's room for adjustment in that?
Oh, you guys have the prerogative to do that, absolutely.
Okay.
Are you talking about the links uh in the uh agenda or the language in the actual resolution?
The resolution itself. Uh the way I read it, you know, it it says wearing protective uh a resolution. Uh urging all citizens, residents, tourists and visitors to wear protective face masks anytime they are outside of their home. Or place of lodging is the title. And it's a little ambiguous, well, not ambiguous, but um it's not clear. Uh to me and the language and the body that we're talking about in a place of business for. You know, I'm not sure what exactly the right language is because there would be some situations like um. City Hall, which is not a business in itself where you would want to, but just indoor. Facilities, uh is that, would that be the right language to specify?
Julie, Julie, might I jump in real quick and to Susan? Um it says individuals should be encouraged. Julie, did you hear that?
Um right, and I.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I recognize that this is encouragement, but I, you know, personally, I'm not gonna wear a mask outside. Riding my bike if I don't anticipate running direct, you know, and getting in close contact with people and I would feel. Somewhat hypocritical, um you know, supporting something like this if I'm not going to essentially, you know, follow. What it says. And I I just think it makes sense for us to hone in on indoor activities.
Anyone else? Comments?
I just wanna clarify um for for the benefit of Councilmember Smith's concern, when you read that the therefore. Um it says now therefore be resolved that all city of Owl Palm's residents, tourists and visitors are urged to wear protective face masks. Whenever they are outside of their home or place of lodging and maybe in a situation where they could come in contact. With other individuals at any point in time during the continued state of emergency. So I think that that would cover. Your concern. If you're at, if you're at the beach or riding your bike, you would not be, unless you. Think that you're gonna be come come in contact with other individuals, then um that's when it is recommended for folks to wear face masks.
Desiree, maybe it'd be appropriate for me to read this now so everybody can hear what we're talking about?
Yes, I think that would be a a good idea, Mayor.
So this is a resolution of this city council of the Owl Palm, South Carolina. Urging all citizens, residents, tourists and visitors to wear protective face masks anytime they are going outside of their home. Or place of lodging. Whereas on March sixteen, twenty twenty, our mayor under the authority of one dash two dash five municipal code. City of Owl Palms declared that the state of emergency exists throughout the city as a result of. Impacts arising from the COVID nineteen pandemic and whereas. The governor of South Carolina issued executive order twenty thirty, twenty twenty dash thirty on May first, twenty twenty. Which rescinded the mandatory self-quarantine and lodging and travel restrictions of. For individuals entering South Carolina from high-risk areas and. Whereas the governor of South Carolina issued executive order twenty twenty dash thirty-one. On May first, twenty twenty, which modified his previous issued home or work order. Thereby allowing for greater access and use of commercial establishments to include permitting. Outdoor dining at restaurants and, excuse me, one second. My throat was getting dry there. Um whereas the city council believes it is necessary to ensure that the public health, safety and welfare. Of its residents, tourists and visitors shall, that shall, all individuals should be encouraged. To wear appropriate face mask anytime they may be in the public setting that could bring them into contact with other people. Outside their family unit and to continue their practice of safety measures recommended by the Centers for Disease Control. And the South Carolina Department of Health Environmental Control. Now therefore, be it resolved that all city of Owl Palms residents, tourists and visitors. Are urged to wear protective face masks whenever they are outside of their home or place of lodging. And may be in a situation where they could come into contact with other individuals at any point of time. During the continued state of emergency. Just for everybody who's in the audience to hear that. Any other, Councilmember Moy?
Thank you, Mr. Uh so uh I'm, I'll I'll share my personal stance on this uh and start with a couple. I'm gonna, I'll reaffirm some understandings I have from the city administrator and um attorney Copeland that given the governor's orders. Um we are um unable to provide any sort of mandate because it would contradict a direct governor's order. So that's my understanding is point number one. My my other points are related to the use of face masks and um why, why it's important and why this resolution. Um is important for us, the statement for us to make as a city, in my opinion, uh because. Um number one, uh as as Councilmember Bell pointed out, we're not out of the woods yet. Um we're still trying to do what we can. As a community, as a state, as a nation to um promote public health as best we can and. Um there's a lot of unknowns still, there's still a lot of research being done. Obviously countless scientists and researchers doing things around the clock. But what we do know is that there's a lot of folks who um have this disease who don't show symptoms. We know that um it's spread when people cough, sneeze, when whatever, um they're expelling. Liquids and molecules from their, from their mouths. Um and that face masks prevent the spread um by um preventing you from, you know, getting those molecules out of the air. And so when you wear a mask, it's not because you're afraid of getting sick yourself, but it's so that you are, you're you're being. Conscientious and you're being respectful of others and it's sort of the silent idea of. We're all in this together and I may, I may be asymptomatic right now. I'm not coughing, I feel quite good, but I could be a carrier of the disease. And so when I go into Harris Teeter, um I'm gonna do my best to protect the folks that are shopping in there. I'm gonna do my best. In particular to protect the folks who are working in there, who are the frontline employees. And this resolution is merely saying that that's the perspective that we take, that we're all in this together. And that we're doing our part, doing what we can, what we know um works for controlling the spread and reducing the spread. That's what we're doing. So that's my perspective. I think that's, you know, we're doing as much as we can. Unfortunately, this is, this is the the most we can do. Um at this stage, so that's uh that's my two cents.
Anyone else? If you don't mind, um I did stop by Harris Teeter this morning and talk to the manager. They are corporate. And they can instruct their employees um as a policy, but they cannot instruct their patrons. Um so what we're doing is trying to encourage public safety, common sense, and I think it's a good move. Um but again, by having, trying to do a law and having the police department have another layer of policing. At every public establishment would be impossible, so I think we're taking the right direction. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Can't hear you.
Has a motion been made?
We have um going, Nicole, did we have a?
No, a motion has not been made to approve anything. Resolution number.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution, the face mask resolution.
Does it have a number attached to it?
Oh, I haven't got, we called the face mask resolution.
That's all it says, thank you.
I'll check.
We have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to insert the language, um insert the word indoor. Into the fourth paragraph so that it reads. Um that all individuals should be encouraged to wear appropriate face masks anytime they may be in an indoor. Public setting, just that one word of indoor.
I like that. Do I hear a second to that amendment? I'll make the second for discussion.
Thank you. I and I'll, you know, I'll speak to it just to say that I think that people will take it. What we're doing here a little more seriously if it's more realistic and um. That would, you know, that's my main argument, uh that I think that that's really what we're targeting is indoor interactions. And that's where it's the most needed. I I certainly agree that face masks. I think in those settings can be, you know, a a big, important measure that we can all take to help prevent spread.
Okay, any other discussion for the amendment?
Yeah, just. Um the the motion, the amendment was made to add any indoor public setting. So that would take away, I would assume, take away. That's public entities, be like the rec center. It'd be public areas, not necessarily private institutions, private businesses. And I'm looking in my upper right-hand corner to my attorney just for clarification.
I'm looking there too, Ryan.
And we can certainly add language to clarify, I mean. What what are you looking, what would you like it to say, I guess is the question that I need to put to you? So we can make it sound.
I was just, I was just, I mean, if that, if if it were to pass, basically, I think it goes through and just it would basically just mandate. I would just try, I was just, I mean, if that, if, if it were to pass, basically I think it goes through and just, it would basically just mandate just publics, public areas, indoor areas, not necessarily what we're.
Well.
Councilmember Smith, second time.
I, I was simply inserting the word indoor. It already states may, you know, public setting is already part of the language. So are you, I guess my question is, are you saying that you, that the indoor actually changes the whole nature of the sentence beyond just?
Nope. And I was, I just had a question for the attorney. You can go ahead and vote on it.
I do have one question on that, Julia. So if we do put this indoor and we do have three-on-three basketball, that means that all basketball players are encouraged to wear face mask. Am I correct in saying that?
Goodness, y'all. Um, I mean, if we're putting, if we're reading it this way, public indoor setting as opposed to a private indoor setting, is that where we're getting with this? Or are we just talking about, we're now just narrowing it to public settings that are only indoors as opposed to outdoors?
I think Ryan's saying is a public versus private, like the rec center.
I was, and basically what, I turned back over my camera here. I was just, and we can believe how it is. That's fine. I just, I wasn't sure if, if changing that status made it go through and just say it was just public. That was my, it was just a question. We can move forward and settle it out later.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? So we have to, uh, an amendment, which is adding one word indoor. Be in a public indoor setting. Is that correct, Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thank you.
And I was a second on that. Let's vote on the amendment. We have a motion to vote on this.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Streetman?
Dave.
Councilmember Pounds?
Hey.
Member Boy?
Hi.
Member Bell?
Hey.
Councilmember Ward?
Nay.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Nay.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Uh, the motion fails three to six.
Now, back to the original.
Mission, original motion to pass the face mask resolution, not including the word.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, executive session if needed. In accordance of section thirty dash four dash seventy eighty, discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements related to the Marina Restaurant lease. So do I hear a motion to go into executive session? So. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, just for our public's knowledge, we are believing this site free to stay. No decisions will be made during executive session. And then we will be coming back out. All those in favor to go into executive session? Roll call.
Councilmember Streetman?
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Moy?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Buchanan?
Aye.
Councilmember Popson?
Aye.
Mayor Carroll?
Aye.
All in favor? You're off record at eight thirteen.
Thank you very much. I'll see y'all on the other side.
Hey, Jimmy? Can you hear me? Okay, you need to unmute yourself. We are, you need to leave this meeting and then dial the new.
I'm trying.
Okay, but you need to leave this, you need to click.
I know. I'm trying.
Let me.
Alright, so I'm out, right? You don't need me.
Yes, thank you, Nicole. Ron?
I'm still.
Do you mind, um, taking Jimmy off of this meeting so that he can log into the other one? Ron?
Please try it.
So at the, Jimmy, at the bottom of your screen, you should see a red button that says leave. I can't hear you.
I used to see one on the top. There it is, leave. I'm leaving meeting.
Alrighty. See you on the other one.
Hmm.
I don't think you, you need to, so once you click leave, there is another screen that comes up that says leave meeting. There you go.
We are getting better at it.
I know.
We've had practice.
A few residents comment on their preference for, for this because it's uh much easier to see who's talking and then being able to present the financials and stuff like that is really.
I know.
When we did the Marina maps, John, it was awesome compared to sitting up there and trying to look at the charts on a display board.
If only we could figure out the vote, the voting.
All right, um mayor, we have everybody on the line now.
What time did we come out?
It is eight fifty-four.
Okay, it is now eight fifty-four. We have come out of executive session, um section thirty dashboard seventy-eight-two discussing negotiations incident to the contractual arrangements related to the Marina restaurant. At least no decisions were made. We have any conversation that we need to discuss? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll spare you the roll call.
Like unanimous consent.
Yes. Good night, everyone. Good night.